Call the meeting to order for the Ashland Board of Commissioners for Thursday, January the 23rd. If you will all will arise. We'll ask Commissioner Goot to do our invocation, and Mr. Wertz will lead us in our pledge.
Yes, sir.
Let us pray. Holy Spirit, we ask and invite you into our chambers to preside over our meeting today. We ask for your divine guidance over this Board of Mayor and Commissioners as we strive to make the right decisions for our city and its citizens. We ask for your spirit of unity and cooperation over our city as we start a new year. Bless our city manager, our staff and employees, and those in attendance today. We pray always in Jesus' name. Amen.
Last hand, gentlemen, please uncover and salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Goot and Mr. Wertz. Appreciate that. Motion to receive and file the minutes as presented.
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion, additions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Motion to receive and file the minutes. That's for the meeting of December the 12th and the 13th. You should have received those the other night because they were rather lengthy.
Some move.
Second.
First and a second. Any corrections, additions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we'll go to our hearings and reports. Well, let's just start with Mr. Goot down here.
I just want to welcome everybody today. This is a great crowd, a great day. We're penning four of our firemen today. I think I've performed three weddings in the room today, and two of those firemen, well, I performed their weddings also. Known one of them since he was, he played little league for me, and so I'm proud of all of you today. We've been busy. Three days in a row. This is my, I feel like I live here. Three days in a row, conference center meeting, work session meeting, and a city commissioner meeting, all open to the public, and so we got a lot done. Those were good productive meetings, and I thank you. I just want to say thanks to all of our city family, our city employees in recent days, all of them in the building, as well as those that work outside. Kudos goes to our water department right now. Somebody's working in a hole right now, trying to fix a water leak. My day, my, mine goes back to days when me and Commissioner Renfro worked for Armco. We were down in a hole somewhere, hoisted down in a grease hole, and so kudos go to our water workers today, and I thank you for your service. That's all I have.
All right.
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm going to be brief. I want to thank everybody for being here today. It's wonderful to see a full house for our second official meeting, our official regular meeting. As Marty said, we had a busy week this week. We're looking forward to more busy weeks ahead. I want to thank the staff for all they've done this past week. I want to thank our guys in our sanitation department, our street department, and our water and wastewater department who are out working in the cold. The days that we got up and didn't want to go to work because it was single digits, those guys were already out working, so we want to thank them for their hard work, and that's all I got.
Commissioner Renfro?
Tag on a little bit what Commissioner Goot said. The open meetings are open. Please come. Let your voice be heard, and as to what DJ was saying, I commend our utility workers also. Thank you.
Very good. Just a little bit of bragging, I guess, on our city manager here, Entram, Mr. Grubb. He's really hit the ground running. We gave him a long list of to-do list, and he's accomplished many of them. And so far, that's actually the first 14 days, they saved $1.4 million for our city. That is phenomenal, and maybe in your report, give a little idea of how we did that with restructuring of some of the, our jobs and, but, and some of the funds that we worked on, with the cemetery, the parking garage, and things like that. But one of the big things working right now is this water leak, and I think I'll pass it to you, Mr. Grubb.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I think you're going to have an update?
Yes, I'm going to yield my time to Mark Hall. He's going to give us a update on the current utility leak that we have going on. And then after that, maybe we can get Ms. Veatch to come up and talk about some of the personnel restructuring.
That'd be fine.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, Mayor and Commissioners, as you're all aware, we got a pretty significant water leak behind Fuji on 13th Street. It's a 12-inch main that failed. The crews have been working hard to try to isolate this leak. It's usually not as easy as just turning off one valve. It's a spider web of a system, so we have to go hit various valves to be able to isolate the water. Currently, we, portions of Oakview Road, Woodland Avenue, Pollard Road, and Dixon Street are experiencing loss of service. They have, since we've been in this meeting, I just got a text that they do have the leak shut off, so that is a good thing. What's always feared when we lose a significant amount of water like that is not just the losing water in that general area, but as we start losing water in the system overall, the board hill tank starts to drain, and that tank needs to maintain a certain level of head, a certain head level to be able to supply water to the sys, throughout the city. So as that level drops down, areas of higher elevations, and specifically the Floyd Street Pump Station starts to lose suction pressure, so anything that's fed by that Floyd Street Pump Station starts losing water, which ends up-
Have we got it, that's shut off enough now where the deboard hill, and now we're okay on?
We should, I don't know what the level of deboard is, because when I left my office, it was still four foot above kind of the danger level.
Right.
But we will, once that's shut off, we will be able to gain back on deboard hill. So anybody that experienced, if they experience loss of service out in the system and they're not in that general area, it should come back as the tank, as the tank refills. And immediately when that gets shut off, the water plant's going to be able to make up a lot of that water and add to the tank. So ultimately, though, the guys will, they'll be able to get in there and determine what needs to be done for the repair. We don't have a timeline yet on the repair, but these guys do this every day, and they, if anybody can fix a leak quickly and properly, they can. So, but I will keep you all briefed through the city manager, and we'll get this thing taken care of as quick as possible. Any questions?
No. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mark.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Next, we'll have Ms. Veatch come up and give us a presentation on some of the personnel changes that we've made.
Good afternoon. Our changes, we eliminated a lot of our vacant positions, and we, some positions that we had employees in, we moved them to vacant positions if all possible. We also have several city staff members taking on additional duties from these vacant positions. Most of these positions were administrative in nature, so no city services will be affected by our changes. The savings is approximately $1.4 million. So a lot of people are taking on additional roles and additional duties to make this work. Anybody have any specific questions?
I guess there's a number of other things, too, in that number with our IT, Section 8. All of those are savings and-
The IT savings will actually be in addition to the $1.4 million. We are probably two months away from eliminating an outside IT contract, and we'll be doing it in-house. We are very lucky. We have talented staff in our police department that have taken on some roles in helping us with that, and a fireman, and myself and Ryan, our new IT person. We are all meeting, Mr. Grubb, in small teams, and we are making sure that every avenue is covered before we pull the plug on the outside IT contract, but we are, that will be approximately $300,000 savings.
Excellent.
Section 8 program, they are to the point now where they are living entirely on HUD funds. No general fund money is being transferred. Our cemetery operations, we've changed those around and saved money over there, and we also, by elimination of a position, we have saved $66,000 at our parking garage, so our money that we're transferring from the general fund is also reduced there. So, good news all the way around.
Well done.
Thank you so much.
And I'd like to thank the city team. It was a team of effort.
Anything else?
No, sir.
All right, we'll move to our public participation. You all know that anyone would like to come and address the commission, coming to the podium, if you'll state your name and your address. You are limited to five minutes, and indicated by the green, you still have time. When it's yellow, you've got 30 seconds, and when you're done, when it's, when it's red. But anyone would like to talk on a particular subject, we'll take one person per subject, and obviously if you'll leave your information with the clerk, we'll be able to address your concerns. We'll take no action at this meeting, but we'll definitely work on it. Anybody would like to work on the, or address the commission? All right, hearing none, we'll move into our consent agenda. Mr. Wheeler?
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution of the City of Ashland, Kentucky, adopting, authorizing, and approving the course of action presented by the city manager on the items appearing on the consent agenda for the regular meeting of the Board of City Commissioners of January 23rd, 2025.
Some move.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, let's move to a festive time, and if I'll have the fire engineers, if you'll come to the, to the front, and if you'd like to bring the person that will be pinning you today with you, and I'll, within the appropriate time, I'll let you introduce them. What I think we'll do is I'll introduce each of the new engineers, just a little synopsis about them, and then they can introduce their guests, who will be pinning them, and then we'll take the oath all in one, one wire. Okay? First, we're going to introduce Engineer Field Davis, and you're-
My mother, Lucy Davis.
Excellent. Glad to have you here. Mr. Davis began his employment with the City of Ashland on January the 9th, 2017. Engineer Davis was promoted to engineer on December the 15th, 2024. He has obtained certifications as a driver operator for the Ashland Fire Department. Engineer Davis has also held several technical rescue certifications. His assignment is to the first platoon, rescue one. Next is Kenton Baker. All right, okay, very good, and-
This is my wife, Lauren Baker.
Glad to have you here. Baker began his employment with the City of Ashland on July the 15th, 2019. Engineer Baker was promoted to engineer on December the 15th, 2024. He has obtained certifications as a driver operator for the Ashland Fire Department, and holds a master's degree from Kentucky University in Safety, Security, and Emergency Management. His assignment is to the third platoon, engine one. Cody Clark?
I'm on, Laura.
Glad to have you all here. Engineer Clark began his employment with the City of Ashland Police Department on the 12th, or the 20th of March, 2017, and transferred to the Fire Department in December 27th, 2021. Engineer Clark was promoted to engineer on December the 15th, 2024. He has obtained certification as a driver operator for the Ashland Fire Department. Engineer Clark also holds several technical rescue certifications. His assignment is to the second platoon, rescue one. And last is James Littrell.
My wife, Stacy.
Glad to have you here. Firefighter Littrell began his employment with the City of Ashland on January the 24th, 2020. He has obtained certification as a driver operator for the Ashland Fire Department, and holds an associate degree in applied science, fire rescue technology. He will be promoted to engineer effective January the 26th, 2025. His assignment will be to the second platoon, engine one. Gentlemen, if you'll raise your right hand, do you solemnly swear to continue to serve the citizens of Ashland in your new capacity in a compassionate manner with courage and integrity, to put others before you, and to accept the sacrifices needed to serve our community? And do you swear to uphold the laws and constitution of the United States, the Commonwealth of Kentucky, and the City of Ashland? So help you God. If you answer, if you will answer, I will. Congratulations, gentlemen.
Yeah.
I deleted him from my directory. He has nothing but very positive things to say.
Yeah, he's a good guy. Good kid.
Thank you, Mayor. Item A, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to Execute Supplemental Agreement Number Two between the Commonwealth of Kentucky Transportation Cabinet and the City of Ashland for Construction of the Winchester Avenue Streetscape Project from 13th Street to 18th Street for Funding in the Amount of $550,000 in federal SAH funds with a local match of $62,500 to be paid from the general fund.
Some move.
Second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item B?
Why don't you hold up and let these people get out?
Yeah, that's a good idea.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to Execute Task Order Number 25-01 Between the City of Ashland, Kentucky and Strand Associates, Inc., for Preparation of the Annual 2024 Combined Sewer Overflow Reports for the Department of Utilities in an Amount Not to Exceed $20,000.
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item C?
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Repealing Ordinance Number 103 Series of 2024 Which Approve Minority Loan Number 2024M004 to Broadway Books LLC.
Some move.
Second.
First and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Abstain.
Item D?
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Amending the Authorized Positions Listing and Adopting the Revised, Updated, and Corrected Job Descriptions for Various Departments Within the City of Ashland of the Classification and Compensation Plan as adopted by Ordinance Number 31 Series of 2023 as previously amended specifically by Ordinance Number 82 Series of 2023.
Some move.
Second?
Second.
First and a second. Any discussion?
Yes, sir. One of the tasks of being a leader is to make some pretty tough decisions, and on its face value, this is, you know, it's a, it's a no-brainer. It saves a million, over a million dollars, million point four, but it did come at a cost. I'm going to vote yes, because it benefits the whole city, but I, I struggled with it. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item E?
Reading and adoption of a resolution entitled, A Resolution of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Accepting the Grant, Approving the Grand Assistance Agreement, Authorizing the Amendment of the City of Ashland's Annual Budget, and Authorizing the, and Directing the Mayor to Execute Any and All Documents Associated with the Grant for the US 23 Winchester Avenue Water Main Replacement Project 21CWW015.
Some move.
Second. First and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item F?
Reading and adoption of a resolution entitled, A Resolution of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Accepting the Grant, Approving the Grand Assistance Agreement, Authorizing the Amendment of the City of Ashland's Annual Budget, and Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to Execute Any and All Documents Associated with the Grant for the US 23 Winchester Avenue Water Main Replacement Project 2020, 22CWW104.
Some move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item G?
Reading and adoption of a resolution entitled, A Resolution of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Accepting the Grant, Approving the Grand Assistance Agreement, Authorizing the Amendment of the City of Ashland's Annual Budget, and Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to Execute Any and All Documents Associated with the Grant for the Bogus Drive Florida Street and Johnson Fork Pump Station Project 22CWW105.
Some move.
Second.
First and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item H?
Reading and adoption of a municipal order entitled, A Municipal- A Municipal Order of the City of Ashland, Kentucky, Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to Execute Any and All Documents Necessary to Effectuate the Participation of the City of Ashland in the Settlement of Pending Litigation with Kroger relating to opioid medications in the Commonwealth of Kentucky, also entitled The Opioid Litigation Case.
Some move?
Second.
First and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item I?
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky, Adopting the Rules and Regulations of the Ashland Police Department and Repealing Ordinance Number 32 Series of 2015.
Some move?
First and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, if we don't have any other thing on the agenda, I'd like to make a motion. We go on executive session to discuss an individual personnel matter.
And second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Go ahead.
And we'll, we'll come back. But just a reminder that our next meeting will be February the 11th, which is a Tuesday, at 5:00 PM. So a little bit of difference. But, all right, will we...
Need to vote on the executive session.
Oh, oh, yes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
And Mayor, if we could also have a motion to discuss property acquisition, I do need to update you all on one thing.
Sure.
I'll make a motion.
Mend?
Second.
Second, okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Go ahead. All right, we're back in session. No action was taken in our executive session. But I will ask for a motion.
Could we also show that only property acquisition and personnel matter, individual personnel, were discussed?
Yes, that's correct. We, yes.
I move, Your Honor, that the designation of Tony Grub as interim city manager be changed to city manager, and appropriate modifications be made to the personnel classification and documents.
I second that motion.
We have a first and a second. Any discussion? I think that Mr. Grub has proven himself, we use the word, got his feet wet, but I think were pretty well wet. And has, has performed admirably and, and up to our specifications. So, welcome, and let's do this right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Well? All right. Let's see, just remember, February 11th, Tuesday, 5:00 PM. Without any other business, we stand adjourned.